Welcome to the Tuesday, January 19, 2021, Virtual Session of Lake Forest City Council. Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Honor Roll Mayor Pam Leon.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Karas.
Here.
Alderman Romo.
Here.
Alderman Notes. Alderman Prashlag.
Here.
Alderman Goshgarian.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Alderman Weber.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Biddy. Will everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have a brief statement to read. In accordance with state statute, I've made a determination that it was not practical or prudent to schedule an in-person city council meeting because of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is why this January 19, 2021, city council meeting will be held remotely. The Q and A option of Zoom will be available during the meeting. Please feel free to add any questions you might have there. And then we'll have a pause mid-meeting for public comment to be phoned in as well. First item on the agenda is reports of city officers, comments by mayor. I guess the only ad hoc comment I would have is we're all looking forward to a peaceful transition of power tomorrow in Washington. I happen to have a daughter that's that lives a couple of blocks from the mall. And she told us on Sunday that everything was fine there, except that there was a soldier with an AR-15 parked under her window all the time. So it's a it's quite a quite a security scene there. But keep our fingers crossed that everything goes well tomorrow and it will be on to a on to a better day. And then maybe in the comments by council members later on, Alderman Karas, you could give us a quick recap of the sort of the final results of the pop-up shop.
I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor.
Be great. Thank you. First item on the agenda is, well, I'll introduce Elizabeth Hollab for a COVID-19 financial impact update. This is our by every other meeting update.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully, everyone can see that. I have the good fortune of continuing to give you good news in this regard. Sorry, clicked the wrong button. As you know, when the city council approved the fiscal year '21 budget in early May, the city was only a month into the pandemic. And so the impacts on the city's budget were really unknown at the time. And I think we've continued to benefit and, as you can see tonight, continue to benefit from the city council's decision to make very conservative budget projections in light of the fact that the pandemic has gone on for so long, practically a year now, 10 months into this. Just to highlight a few of the new information, updated information for you. First, municipal sales tax. We continue to see actual results exceed the budget projections. Here you can see six months of the fiscal year '21 revenue. We have a 90-day lag on receipt, so the January collections relate to October sales. So from May to October, year-to-date for those sales, we've seen the current year down only 13% compared to actual year-to-date last year. So I think in light of the pandemic and the impacts on businesses, I think that's great news. And as you can see here, year-to-date collections of 909,000 compared to a budget of 632,000. So very favorable continued, you know, through October at least. So as we receive collections in February and March, we'll start to see the impact of holiday sales. But so far, the news is very good from a sales tax standpoint. Income tax, again, we've talked about this at each update. We certainly expected income tax to be significantly impacted by COVID-19 and the closures and layoffs. But because unemployment is taxed in the state of Illinois and there was supplemental unemployment benefits provided related to the pandemic, we are seeing year-to-date numbers of 1.4 million in revenue received compared to a projection in the budget of 555,000. What I think is somewhat staggering is that our year-to-date collections actually exceed fiscal year '19 and fiscal year '20 for the year-to-date. These are the two blue bars. So fiscal year '19, fiscal year '20, at 1.1 and 1.2 million. Year-to-date, 1.4 this year. So a very significant positive budget variance in this revenue. Another area of the budget where we projected and are seeing significant impacts are the Park and Recreation Fund. This is activity through December 31. The Park and Recreation Fund budget here is split between Parks and Forestry, which is largely funded from property tax collections versus recreation programs, which would rely a lot on program fees. So you can see as of December 31, year-to-date activity in Parks and Forestry is very similar to the prior year, year-to-date. We do still have some deferral of property tax collection. So because Lake County opted to allow four installment payments instead of two this year, we're we're still got about 3% or 4% of property tax revenue to be collected. But you can see that both revenue and expenses year-to-date are very much in line with last year. Recreation programs, as you can imagine, has been significantly impacted. We continue to see impacts on recreation programming of coronavirus in the pandemic. So you can see that the prior year, year-to-date actual, compared to the current year, year-to-date actual, both a significant reduction in revenue, but also some savings. So we've seen some budgetary savings on the expense side. And year-to-date, as of December 31, the net of recreation programs, net of revenue and expense at a deficit of 1.7 million, only slightly worse than prior year, year-to-date, which was 1.4 million. So net, it's not significant, but we are continuing to see shortfalls in recreation program revenues. And then we just have the total here, fund total, combining the two. The good news is that we did, again, in this fund budget very conservatively. And so, you know, we are prepared for and anticipate the reduction in fund balance in the Park and Recreation Fund. The next fund, Deer Path Golf Course, as you know, had a fantastic year. We were not sure in early May how golf would be impacted. But they were able to open May 1st at the beginning of the fiscal year. And despite being under some restrictions, you can see that they've outperformed last year. So last year, at November 30, we had 1.36 million in revenue. This year, 1.66 in revenue. So revenue actually outperforming fiscal year '20. And on a net basis as well, we're positive 264,000 as of November 30 compared to last year, 157,000. So continued good news in golf. Moving to the Capital Improvement Fund, so this is the fund where most of your capital projects are budgeted. We're looking here only at the revenues. But all, you know, good news on the Capital Improvement Fund front as well. Property tax, we still have a little bit of that property tax revenue to come in, but we do anticipate it to come in in January and February. Home real sales tax cannot compare to the prior year due to the fact that last year was a partial year for the increased home real sales tax. But we are currently slightly above budget protections on home real sales tax. So no, no negative impacts in that area. Real estate transfer tax, simply off the charts, we've talked about that every month. We we anticipated a reduction in real estate transfer tax for FY '21. This is the full-year budget of 900,000, and we're already at 2.1 million in real estate transfer tax. And then the only other item I would note is this general fund transfer. So because of the conservative assumptions in the general fund, we could not budget a significant transfer from the general fund to the capital fund for fiscal year '21. But I would note that at your March meeting, we will be looking at year-end estimates. And based on the positive variances we're seeing in the general fund, we anticipate an ability to transfer more money from the general fund than the budgeted 300,000. This page just, again, kind of captures for you an overview of the real estate market in Lake Forest for this year. This chart, you've seen it a few times. This just tracks year-to-date residential transfers, number of transfers. This green line is the current year. As of December 31, we've already exceeded the last four years for the full year. So simply unprecedented activity in residential transfers in Lake Forest. Another really good, good news story despite the pandemic impacting everyone. So just noting here, as of 12/31, real estate transfer tax revenue is already 1.45 million ahead of budget projections year-to-date. And this for you is just a citywide summary, looking at key revenue indicators that we're watching. Most of these, we've talked about already. But all of these are positive with the exception of recreation program fees. So you can see as of the respective dates, January 31, we're ahead about 278,000 in municipal sales tax, $865,000 in income tax, 22,000 in home real sales tax, over 700,000 in the golf course, 1.4 million in real estate transfer tax. And then, as you know, the city did not contemplate or budget any type of stimulus from either federal, state, you know, governments. We were simply too early in the pandemic to know what might be available. So the good news is that the Lake County Coronavirus Relief Funds, the city received about 899,000 total. But you did provide for about 50,000, 50,624 to be allocated to the library. So this $849,000 is unbudgeted revenue intended to offset impacts to local governments of coronavirus pandemic. And then motor fuel tax, just because it's interesting, we didn't forecast or make any adjustments to the motor fuel tax fund. But the thought was that we might see a reduction in revenues just due to the reduced driving of people not commuting to work. But we were actually right on target with budget, so we are not seeing a deficit in that fund either. And then, as you can see, recreation program fees, as of 12/31, about 592,000 less than budget despite the fact that we even reduced the budget anticipating a shortfall. And then finally, as Alderman Weber asked during the Finance Committee meeting, this is just a status update on the grant program. As you know, you have authorized two different grant programs, one being based on sales tax generation and another a cost sharing of city license fees, but also 50/50 cost sharing on costs that businesses are incurring simply to operate under the governor's orders and restrictions. So as of today, we have provided some form of financial support to 56 businesses in the city. $86,544 have been awarded in grant-eligible amounts to those 56 businesses. And although this indicates seven applications were pending, we actually received two more today. So we have nine pending applications under review. So we've seen some increased activity. And certainly that cost sharing, the new program you approved in October, is proving to be very attractive to the businesses still trying to operate. That is all I have as far as the presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Director Hollab, can you comment on the type of businesses that we've seen most recently since October take advantage of the financing we've provided?
That is handled through community development, but just, I outside peek, it's mostly restaurants. And I think that the sales tax program, because of their limited revenues, we're just not going to generate a lot of revenue. So the opportunity to receive their liquor license fee refunded at 100% or to actually have some of those costs they're incurring to operate, tents, protective equipment, all of those types of things, having 50% of that reimbursed by the city is proving to be quite attractive.
But, well, I'm glad that the the new option provided some relief for those businesses to keep them operating during these difficult winter months.
Director Hollab, maybe you just answered my question with your last comment, but it related to the sales tax grant part of the program. And is my understanding correctly that it just, it would have ended after the calendar year December 2020? And the question I was going to pose, is there any reason to extend it into 2021? But it sounds like our experience with that program is one where it doesn't offer that much opportunity or benefit.
Well, I would say that we're not quite closed out. They can submit through the end of January because they're just now at their deadline for December sales taxes being remitted to the state. So we've still got a couple more weeks to close that program out. I I would say would not, there would not be a downside to extending that if the council would like us to bring back an action to let them continue to have some of their sales tax rebated. I think the advantage to them was that, and I think it was Alderman Bushman's recommendation, that we pay out a half a percent, even though the grant was actually for a quarter percent of their calendar year 2019 sales, that that proved to be good because they could recover that fund, those funds faster, even though their sales might have been down compared to to last year. So I think certainly for those who are participating in the program, they they reached their limit before, most of them reached their limit before they got to December sales. So an extension would give them some additional funding opportunity.
In light of those comments, I guess I would recommend staff continue to consider, you know, coming back to the council if it seems to make sense of extending the program.
We'll certainly review that at a staff level and could be back before you in February with that.
I have, I have one question. How is January tracking in terms of real estate transfer tax? Does it slow down? Is it too soon to tell? Is it?
I actually didn't inquire. I should have anticipated that question. But I, we did, we do tend to see kind of that activity go down during the holidays. We saw that in December. It was the lowest number in several months going back to June. And we actually, the data that we got on pending closings showed that there'd been a little softening, a little slowdown in the number of transfers. But still, the price people are getting for their sales are still up. So that is good news, too, for those selling.
And I would note, too, Mayor, that I think, you know, while transactions were down slightly, inventory is certainly down as well. So in a lot of respects, that mirrors more traditional years and the cycles of the real estate market. So it'll be interesting, obviously, for us to monitor whether inventory begins to pick up in late winter and early spring. And if so, I would imagine you'll see that reflected, hopefully, in strong sales figures again. And if inventory remains tight, certainly that may have positive impact on median sales prices as well.
We might be the first city to have a waiting list.
I think Lake Bluff already has one, based on, based on the numbers that Drew Irvin was showing last week. So, okay, if there are no further questions, we can move on to the next item, which is comments by the city manager.
Well, then, I'm pleased to say I have no report tonight, Mayor. So in the interest of time, I'll help move things along.
Okay, well, the next item, next item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Members of the public can provide public comment by calling into the following number during the meeting, We'll wait a minute here while we give people an opportunity to call in. Also, people can communicate via the Q and A function on the on the Zoom screen.
Mr. Mayor, we have no phone calls at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. Alderman Morris, Financial, Finance Committee Chair, has a presentation of the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award.
Yes, I do. It's a great pleasure to talk about this Distinguished Budget Presentation Award because we have such an outstanding financial team. This is the fifth consecutive year that they've been awarded this, this presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association. It's intended to recognize the highest form of recognition, government budgeting, and significant accomplishment by a government and its management, which goes to our team, Director Hollab. I always am impressed by the fact that of the 89,000 units of government in the United States, only 1.9% of those units received this award. It's, it's just remarkable. It's, it's their professionalism, their thoroughness, and the depth of presentation that they put in the budget. It would be nice if our residents were able to really read through it. I know that's a challenge, but it's a, it's a remarkable document. So well done to the, to the team. And in addition, the GFOA presents a certificate of recognition for budget preparation, which is awarded to our Director Hollab. Again, she has led the preparation of the budget, making required changes to meet the stringent requirements of GFOA and the needs of the city. So Director Hollab, I hope when you come to work tomorrow, this award will be on your desk, since I can't hand it to you tonight. But congratulations and thank you very much for such a well-done job.
Congratulations very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. Next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. We have 14 today, so have to bear with me as I work my way through this. The first is approval of the extension of the mayor's declaration of a local state of emergency until the next city council meeting. Number two, approval of the December 7, 2020, city council meeting minutes. Number three, approval of the check register for the period November 21 to December 31, 2020. Four, approval of a resolution required for bank purposes to amend authorized signatures for the medical and dental bank account. Number five is approval of agreements with the Ferguson Group for Grant Research and Writing Services and Carisoft Technology for eCIVIS Grant Administration Software. Six is approval of an agreement with Sentinel Technologies, Inc., to provide additional development services for the Lake Forest app, increasing the total project cost from $23,560 to $35,560. Number seven is approval of a supplemental appropriation at the city of Lake Forest, of the city of Lake Forest renovation contribution for the North Suburban Special Recreation Association facility and direction to issue a check to North Suburban Special Recreation Association in the amount of $44,198. Eight, approval of a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board to purchase 15 pieces of fitness equipment as budgeted in the, in the fiscal year '21 Capital Improvement Plan. Number nine, approval to award a contract to Applied Ecological Services, Inc., to form restoration and stabilization of a portion of the ravine located at the Lake Forest Cemetery in an amount to exceed 18,000, I'm sorry, $118,500. Ten, authorized sole vendor funding for fire engine number 212's factory refurbishment and parts acquisition included in the fiscal year 2022 capital equipment budget in the amount of $85,000, specifically $30,000 to Pierce Manufacturing, $29,000 to Rainbow Collision, $8,000 to McQueen Emergency, and the remaining $18,000 for parts and vehicle shipping. Number 11, award of a bid for the, for the purchase of a compact loader included in the fiscal year 2022 capital equipment budget to the National Source, to the National Sourcewell low bidder, Altorfer Cat, in the amount of $125,000. Number 12, award of bids for the replacement of a front-load refuse, refuse truck included in the fiscal year 2022 capital equipment budget to the National Sourcewell low bidders, JX, JX Truck Center chassis, for the chassis in the amount of $153,752, I'm sorry, $153,752. McNellis Truck Manufacturing for the body in the amount of $142,879 and EJ Equipment for the front-load can in the amount of $34,673. Thirteen, ratification and award of a bid for the purchase of a replacement one-ton dump truck included in the fiscal year 2022 capital equipment budget to Advantage Chevrolet for the chassis in the net amount of $23,071 and to PB Loader for the body in the amount of $31,703. And 14th and last, award of a bid for the purchase of a utility tractor included in the fiscal year 2022 capital equipment budget to the National Sourcewell Low bidder, Dear &amp; Company, in the amount of $87,884. Are there any items that any member of the council would like to have removed or taken separately?
I don't want to have them removed or taken separately, but I have a question about number nine. If Director Thomas is around. And he appears to be around.
Just one second, he is.
And Chuck Myers is also available, if this is in regards to the ravine work.
It is. It's just a quick question. And I think that I heard it already once from Director Thomas. The stones that are being used in that ravine project are not going to be the same stones that were used in the ravine going down to the lake. Is that accurate?
Chuck, are you available for that one?
Yeah, this is Chuck. There are no stones on the bottom in this particular project. And they're not, this project isn't anything like the Forest Park Ravine Project.
Okay, so is there no, so there's no riffle structure incorporated into this?
No, there's not. Most of the work is actually on the, the slope going down. There's no work, significant work at the base. So, no, there's not stone like in some of our other projects.
And so, and so how much, I'm just trying to get a, a concept for this. How far from the mouth of the ravine does this extend back, this project?
It doesn't actually go to the mouth. This is an It doesn't actually go to the mouth. This is an area, probably, I would say 75 to 100 yards from the mouth. It's actually where there was some, where there was a slippage of soil about a year and a half ago. So it's back away from the mouth of the ravine.
Okay, all right, and not touching the, the base of the ravine then, really. Correct. Okay. All right, thank you for your answer. Thank you. If you want, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions concerning item five, which is requesting our approval for agreements with the Ferguson Group in connection with grant research. And even though the agreements themselves have a value of only about $40,000, I think we've all experienced the importance of grants in many of our projects that are many-fold that amount. And I guess one of the questions that I have is what level of expertise the staff feel the Ferguson Group brings? And is it at all three levels, federal, state, and local?
Thank you, Alderman Bushman. So this was a result of an RFP that was sent out by the city to look for two different types of grant services. One being grant research and grant writing to support the city in its efforts to identify and apply for grants as well as grant administration. So either a software application or a contracted provider who would help the city administer and track the grants once they've been awarded. When we received the proposal from the Ferguson Group, they did submit a proposal jointly with the e-CIVIS software. The Proposal Review Committee, which had representatives from Public Works, Parks and Recreation, as well as the Finance Department, were quite impressed with the Ferguson Group's success from a federal standpoint. A lot of our grants that are federal money are passed through the state. And quite honestly, have been very difficult for Public Works and Parks and Recreation staff to work with the, the state agencies. And as you know, we have a significant delay in receiving those, those grant fundings once we apply for reimbursement after we've made the expenses. So the attractiveness of the Ferguson Group was that we could better tap and better leverage federal grants at a federal standpoint. They're, they're headquartered in Washington DC and they do considerable federal grant work for their clients. And they have a 70% award rate because they assist their clients in identifying the grants that they can be most successful in obtaining. But Review Committee felt that we could leverage them to use our resources wisely and really go after grants that we would be successful in, in receiving. And I know Public Works particularly was, was interested in, in getting those grants awarded directly from the federal government. They will work with us on state pass-through grants, but for us, this is an opportunity that we haven't had before. So we felt the Ferguson Group would bring that to the city.
That's very important, I think, to have that expertise. But let me focus it on state where we do have IDOT, we do have Illinois Department of Natural Resources. I think these are agencies that at times we look for. Is the Ferguson Group, you know, have an expertise in dealing with the state level?
Yes, they do. And so they, they had a previous relationship with Lake County for a number of years and are looking to potentially reinstate that relationship with Lake County. They will assist us with state pass-through grant applications as well.
And is there a potential for a conflict situation? In other words, if they, you know, have a like arrangement with the other municipalities who are trying to identify and apply for like grants, is there a potential for conflict there in representing us?
It's a very good question, one that didn't come up in our discussions with the Ferguson Group. But my, you know, my guess is that with a 70% award rate, they, they probably have, have addressed that and, and work around that. I don't know that. They don't represent any, any Illinois municipalities right now. So at least in the state grants, they would only be serving Lake Forest interests at that, you know, in that regard. And I would guess that from a federal standpoint, there's probably sufficient amounts of money that they can apply, you know, for several different clients to the same grant. We can certainly ask.
Yeah, to be, just to be sensitive, and it may be where, as you, you said, there's money out there and they can apply on the behalf of multiple municipalities. And the winner wins and the loser loses wherever the chips may fall. But they'll still play a role of assisting the municipality either way. But it's, I just was wondering if you get into a competitive situation there. And I take it bottom line, staff feels that the $40,000 cost is something that is going to be more than offset by expect the, expected savings and benefits from the use of Ferguson?
Yes, the, the expectation is absolutely yes. We should, I, I would just note that 12,500 of the 40,000 is this software licensing annually for the grant administration software e-CIVIS. That will allow the city to be more efficient. Having a central portal where we're tracking all of our grants at the same time will be very beneficial and, and make things a lot more efficient for the operating departments here at the city. You know, the Ferguson Group would be contracted for 24,000 per year. It would be 2,000 a month for their support in grant research and identification. And then we would pay them an hourly rate if we were actually looking for them to actually assist us with the, the application process. So the Review Committee was very excited about the potential and felt we would definitely have a good return on that investment.
Thank you, Director Hall.
Maybe I could just follow up on Mr. Bushman's comments. Director Hall and I have been talking about this for a number of years. And it came to our attention that Glenview gets a tremendous amount of grant money every year, millions and millions of dollars. And we've talked about how we could improve our ability to go after those grants. And we talked to a number of different scenarios, but I was pleased to see that, that she was able to follow up with this RFP and, and identify a, an organization to help us. Because if you're successful, it makes a big difference in our budget. So looking forward to having this go forward.
And I, I'd like to add a little bit on to that, too. The, the part about the grant administration, you know, doesn't sound like much, but it's a huge deal because these grants all come with a lot of strings attached. And you have to jump through all kinds of hoops. And if you trip over one of these little tripwires, you can have the grant rescinded and they can come after you for all kinds of penalties. And it's, it's actually a very important piece and one that, you know, we've been talking for, actually, since I was the finance chair, at least, about, you know, doing a better job of tracking that and making sure that we don't, we don't run afoul of any of these. You know, once you get the money, that's not where it ends. It, it keeps going. They keep looking and they keep, you have to submit all kinds of reports. And it's, uh, it's, it's daunting to, to actually use these grants in many cases. So that's a big part of the, of the package here. I also was very impressed by the fact that, that they've set it up in such a way that it's sort of as needed. I mean, there's a base level of, of sort of a retainer here. But then the real value comes when we get into a situation where we really need their expertise to either put a grant package together or, you know, compete for a grant or whatever, or whatever. And I think we've got pretty good skills on the staff at this point. We've done a lot on our own, but it's time to make it more organized and systematic.
And just to add one more comment on the grant request process. I know we've had experiences in Public Works where it seems like we have to pay double the engineering costs just to justify the grant to apply for it. And obviously, if you're not going to be that successful in the application, you really shouldn't be spending that extra money. But if you have more confidence and more expertise in the process, that's more comforting.
Another big pack factor here is the sort of newly adopted procedure where we're doing the design work one fiscal year and the actual bidding and letting of the contract in the subsequent year. Because many of these grant require, grant opportunities are looking for shovel-ready projects. And so if you don't have your design done, you really can't compete for the grant. And so we're fortunate to be able to have the resource, the financial resources to spec those, those design dollars, which should really help with the follow-through on the grants. So it's a little, little bit of a diversion here, but it's, this is a project, this is sort of part of a bigger project, bigger initiative that's been going on for some time, as Alderman Morris alluded to.
Right, I think this is a fabulous proposal. It makes sense on so many levels. If, if you weren't able to outsource this and really hire an independent contractor, then it would really be time that we hire somebody with all of the associated costs of a new hire. So I think this is fabulous and I'm excited about it. I've been in favor of this type of thing. I know I talked to Alderman Morris when we came on together to the city council about doing something like this. And I think it makes all the sense in the world. I think Public Works will benefit tremendously from it. Those are the projects that qualify for these grants. It's stormwater projects. I think our ravine projects might be able to qualify for some of these grants. I see a real benefit for a lot of environmental programs through these grants. That's where a lot of the money is. So I am thrilled with this. Thank you.
Other comments or questions about any of the items on our list here?
Mayor, I have a question on item six for Jim Shaw, if he's available. I'm just looking if he can elaborate a little bit more on what additional functionality he's identified that this app needs for push communication that was not thought of initially.
Yes, Alderman, this is Jim. And what we're looking at here is really expanding the functionality of push communications, being able to decentralize the operation of push, allowing each of the groups to access the system independently and have control over their population, meaning they'll be able to push those communications as needed, as they see fit for their individual group. That security would be wrapped into our total, into our Lake Forest directory structure, our Microsoft Active Directory. So it would be an extension of that directory service. We think it would be a more secure approach. We think it would add functionality and allow us to decentralize this operation.
So individuals can sign up for specific department push notifications and therefore become a recipient of each individual list. And then these departments can therefore push out those specific notifications versus a general city push for everybody.
Correct. Versus a centralized approach where we would have to have, you know, someone manning the station, so to speak, for the different departments. This would allow the individual departments to act on their own for their groups.
And this, you didn't have this thought in, in the initial conversation?
It, it kind of evolved. Initially, this is something we wanted, but we weren't going to get there with our Active Directory unless we were to put more into the project. So we want security. We want to be a secure system. We want to use our directory structure from Microsoft. And we want the decentralization. So.
It makes a lot of sense. And I think that moving forward, we need to be sure that we are reaching more of the residents so that they can get signed up. Because I think this is, is an investment that will continue to need to be maintained. I think it's an excellent one and I'm all for it. I just want to be sure that we have as much exposure to the residents as we can so that they are taking advantage of it with their tax dollars going to support it. I mean, I think it's just crucial to have that great communication. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
And, and I'll just note to your point, Alderman Weber, again, some of this will be sort of repeated in my comments at our next council meeting. But our intent, once this is live, is to really aggressively roll out the marketing and public awareness aspect, you know, approach to educating the residents. And that'll include not just all of our electronic communications, but I think we're going to do an individualized mailer to the community with just a little, you know, QR, QR code that'll take them straight to the App Store with some instructions on how to customize. But yes, no question, the investment and the technology only makes sense if we have people using it. So we will work very hard and it'll be a sustained and deliberate effort to, again, to educate the public and, and increase awareness.
And, and just to tag on quickly, I think more than just the taxpayer themselves. I mean, we have a lot of students here and high school, I mean, people with cell phones now. My five-year-old keeps asking for one. So, you know, we, we can really, I think, hit a wide audience, whether it's for beach updates or ice skating updates or whatever it is, to really be a great method. Thanks for all the effort.
And, and to your point, that's exactly, I think, as, as Director Shaw said. I mean, that's really the logic of decentralizing some of the communications. I think the volume of information that we'll be able to, to push out is so significant. It just didn't make sense to have it highly centralized through one, one or two individuals. And you're right, people can customize it. So, you know, you might not be interested in what's happening at the beach, but you want daily Croya updates. Or you might not be interested in, you know, general city affairs, but your kids are in soccer and you want daily updates on field conditions. It'll be highly customizable to anyone interested in the community based on what their interests are. And that's what's so exciting about it.
Well, I'd be happy to take a look at the marketing efforts that are unrolling for that. I just have some other ideas maybe to hit up our seniors as well, who might not be some of them as tech savvy. So just keep me on the, in the loop. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, I just have some other questions that occurred to me this past couple of weeks. And that has to do with social media and how we keep track of it and address it. And then recently even listening to the Plan Commission deliberations, you know, there was apparently some misinformation that was going out on some of these projects via social media. So I don't know if it's a discussion for this or if it would, is something that can be addressed within this framework. But perhaps at a future meeting, we can have a serious discussion about being sure that when some of this misinformation starts to go out, that it's nipped in the bud somehow. I don't know if anyone else has thoughts on that or if Jennifer or Susan want to address it or whatever. But it just seems.
Could we table this for about two minutes while we actually vote on the, on the omnibus? And then the next thing on the agenda is additional items for discussion and comments by council members, which is the perfect place on the agenda to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, I do want to talk about this a little bit tonight and more in the future.
Great.
Because I've been, I've been after him for the last couple of weeks while, while watching all this take place. And I think we need to look at our policies there. So. But anyway, with, if that concludes the comments on the omnibus, I would entertain a motion to approve the 14 omnibus items that is, that are here as presented. Do we have a, did we catch a second there, Biddy?
I, I think I did.
Okay.
Second, I agree. I.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rummel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Preshlek.
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
And Alderman Weber. AEA zero N, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. As I mentioned a second ago, the next item on the agenda is additional items for discussion and comments by council members. And I'm, I'm going to pick up on Melanie's observation because I have the exact same observation. And we've historically taken a very hands-off policy about social media. And we've historically taken a very hands-off policy about social media. And we may not want to engage in threads of arguments between, you know, local members of various active social media noise generators, for lack of a better word. But we do need to come up with a policy for dealing with misinformation that is put out there. It's it was it was a big issue last spring in advance of the 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 Black Lives Matter issue. It was a big issue with respect to the beach. People just make stuff up and they put it out there and other people believe them. It's unbelievable. I mean, things that that on the face of it don't make any sense are become gospel. And so I think we do need to look at that, Alderman Rummel, and 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 that conversation has begun.
Good.
I would just I would just add to that. Jason and I have spoken a little bit about this. This is obviously a perpetual problem that is is going to continue because social media is proliferating and people are more active on a variety of platforms. So there are there are some best practices, as someone who's done a lot of crisis communications, that we can put to work. You know, we can, you know, think through the best way to address some of the comments, you know, on, let's say, legitimate groups. Because, you know, you really don't care about every, you know, every single group that's organized on all these platforms. But there, what I would sort of, you know, identify as legitimate groups. So we should, you know, again, talk through a a strategy to ensure that, you know, we nip in the bud any misinformation and that the city has had an opportunity to sort of set the record straight, if you will.
Sure, and and I'm happy to just jump in to to note that there are are plenty of active conversations that we're having at the staff level about how we continue to refine our approach and understanding our need to be proactive and getting information out and being part of that community conversation rather than just reactive after information has already been put out there. And so, you know, we're reassessing our approach as we speak. I'm happy to share in the near future with with the council, you know, some some thoughts we have on how to refine that approach. But all of the comments are understood. Certainly, I hear you and and share some of those beliefs and confident we can, again, improve and refine our approach as we move forward.
I would just add to that, that this has become a particularly pertinent issue for us because so many of the, you know, authentic news vehicles have disappeared. So, you know, that that dearth, you know, creates a void. And again, a lot of that void is being addressed online. So it's really, it's it's an issue that we need to be thinking about and 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 determine how to address.
Good point.
If I could just add to, I think a lot of the the noise comes from individuals who like to kind of generate discussion, whether it's truthful or not. And the some of the most recent ones that I've viewed on the Facebook and Instagram platforms relating to some more recent issues, it's really, though, a small percentage of residents that are engaging. So when we look at the entire resident population or, you know, taxpayer, it's a small group. I think when we look at the strategy, we really can identify maybe a more individual approach in contacting versus perhaps more of a widespread. So I know that there's more to develop, but I think when we think about it, there's always a few very noisy. And there's a lot of people who are just sitting back and reading. And I think those are the ones that we need to connect with to say, you know, just so so you know, the information may or may not be truthful.
This is Jim Preschlag, I have a comment on the topic. You know, it's not just social media. I mean, it's phone calls, it's word of mouth, it's emails. You know, this gets to the heart of what an alderman is. You know, we're we're supposed to be ambassadors of our city and we're supposed to be connected, you know, with a coalition of people that we can get back channel communications from and get out in the head of the curve and actually, you know, be an influencer around assuring people that there's a really strong community development process that has served us well, that the facts are in a petition. And I spent a lot of time doing that. I did a lot of that, you know, just during the, you know, the BLM protest. And I just had conversations with people about First Amendment rights. And, you know, you have phone calls, you have emails, you try to get to people that you know are mavens in our community that are influencers and can can sway, you know, lots of different people. This isn't about social media. I mean, that's one component of it, but it's about our relationships in the community and how we can lead in that capacity in a thoughtful way, you know, keep our presence and 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 just point to the processes and, you know, arm them with the facts. And it's it's going to be an ongoing challenge. And certainly, social media, it's a different dimension to it. And I think we all probably monitor different areas of it to try to see what's percolating up. But, you know, it's a lot of it is old-fashioned reaching out to people and just saying, hey, are you hearing this? Because here's here's kind of what's going on from a process perspective. And can you kind of share that with folks, you know? So I think it's like that we need to be accessible, we need to be listening and be agents of that change. I think to put it all on the city and some social media strategy and all that kind of stuff, I think that kind of, you know, that's maybe part of it. But there's there's really a comms role and a community role that we all play.
I I would just, I agree with some of those comments, Jim, but I I don't think it's a social media strategy per se. I I think you establish best practices and cultivating relationships with your constituents is is of utmost importance. But unfortunately, you know, there are a lot of residents who, you know, just, you know, catch wind of something and 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 they perpetuate it, you know, by, you know, just spreading it on social media. So, you know, we do as a city, it's incumbent upon us to understand how individuals are utilizing these platforms and to be well-priced of that and and to determine, you know, how we can, you know, really, you know, the the news is for us, we need to manage our own news, we don't want it to be shaped or managed for us, so.
All I'm saying is that we play a big part of that, not, you know, just our internal city processes and strategy, that that we're the agents of that news.
Absolutely agree that it's
Can't lose sight of that.
I agree with you cold-heartedly.
Well, on a happier and bit lighter note, Alderman Karas, can you give us a 30-second catch-up on the
Thirty seconds.
Well, maybe you can have a minute.
Forty-five, how about forty-five? Well, I I again, just want to, you know, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city manager for getting behind this idea. It exceeded our wildest expectations. In total, we generated about $66,000 in gross revenue. That was among the sixty nonprofits who participated in this project. And then, of course, we had this limited edition collection of merchandise that was very popular. So the average sale was about $70, we did about 900 transactions. But I think one of the most interesting aspects of having this pop-up is is the, you know, what it did for our community. There were a number of people, a lot of people who came in, they were interested in what was going on there. They learned about some of the organizations that maybe they hadn't had an opportunity to spend time with. And and then and then just, you know, the meeting and, you know, being introduced to each other. There were a lot of occasions that I witnessed where nonprofits, I mean, maybe it was the Borton Center that was interacting with Alawa or the college interacting with Ragdale. So, you know, we're really able to facilitate that interaction, which was which was a real pleasure to see. So I think overall, it was an enormous success. We got a tremendous amount of feedback from both the nonprofit participants and community who stopped by and purchased things and and really sort of loved this idea and loved that we we decided to create it. As far as what's next for the pop-up, I we're doing sort of a full-fledged sort of comprehensive assessment of what worked, what didn't, what were the key learnings. We'll present that to the mayor and and propose, you know, maybe doing something else. If that space that that space was ideal, it was, you know, just the perfect location. If we do it in in April or May, obviously, the weather weather would be much better. So we'll have the ability to open doors and and utilize some of the other space around that station. So overall, it was it was it was a lot of fun and a great success. I guess I just, you know, I I've neglected to recognize Mike Strong, who we really couldn't have done this without Mike Strong and Rick Day, who's the program manager at Croya. Susan McMahon, of course, is the woman we hired to to get the shop running open and and running on a day-to-day basis. And Susan Banks, our communications manager, who put a lot of thought and effort into making sure, you know, as many people heard about it as possible.
Well, it was, it started out with a very small idea. And Jennifer, to her credit, took that and just exploded it. And it was turned out to be, you know, one of the major things that people were talking about around town through the holidays. So great job, great creativity, great execution. Thanks to the city staff who did a lot of work behind the scenes, as Jennifer alluded to, to actually do the sort of the back-of-the-office stuff, you know, how do you how do you process payments? I mean, that was a, you know, that's a big deal. We didn't have a system for that or there was no system for that. So anyway, great, great story, great success. And, you know, we'd love, we need to figure out how to build on it. So thank you, Jennifer.
Well done.
Any other alderman comments?
No, I just, I do want to mention something on a separate topic. I don't know if you've all had the opportunity to drive by the viaduct at McKinley in Illinois and seen the new art, the new mural that's there. If you haven't, I encourage you to do that. Let me just briefly say that this is, this was something that we initiated to mark the 40th anniversary of Croya. And the the outcome is 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 extraordinary piece of art. Tommy Quinn, who's a 1999 graduate of Lake Forest, Lake Forest High School, went to RISD in Rhode Island, is is sort of this up-and-coming, really sort of is is an artist, a well-known artist nationally now, mural artist. And the icon, so it took about 75 hours to create this. There are 171 different icons that are incorporated into the word or the words you belong. There's not Y-O-U, it's just the letter U and the word belong, which really speaks to anybody who's interested in being part of Croya. The strong message, of course, is that you belong at Croya, with Croya, interacting with Croya, no matter, you know, what your interests are. And there's really sort of a broader community community message as well, especially during this time. You know, there are a lot of people who are struggling, both families and and students with being remote and not having a regular routine. And, you know, I think it's a reminder that everybody belongs and everybody belongs in Lake Forest. So I I hope that that you have a chance to see that. It's it's really pretty spectacular piece of work. Tommy, by the way, did the 1999, there was a viaduct that was based on Nighthawks, the Edward Hopper Nighthawks picture or painting. And he did a pretty special rendition of of Nighthawks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, well, at that point, then, I would like to request a motion to adjourn into executive session. I would like to read this motion and then have somebody move it along. We're adjourned into executive session pursuant to 51 LCS 120-2C5, whatever that is. The city council will be discussing the consideration of purchase or lease of real property. And 120/2C6, the city council will be discussing the disposition of property and the consideration for the sale or lease of property owned by the public body. And 5 ILCS 120-2C11, the city council will be discussing pending or threatened or imminent litigation. Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Moved.
Seconded.
Hey, we need a roll call vote, please.
We do. Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Aye, a zero, a motion carries.
Okay, and for any members of the public that are out there, before we adjourn, please be informed that there will be no additional city business following the adjournment into executive session. We will simply adjourn from executive session, reconvene as city council, and then move to adjourn the city council meeting when we're finished with the executive session. So there'll be no more, nothing else to to keep an eye on tonight from the city council.